I'm going to call to order this work session meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, September 15th, 2021. And first on our list is Ms. Payne from Planning to talk about the Robinson Farm Rezone.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Can you all hear me?
We sure can. Good morning.
Okay, great. So this is a rezone request for property located at 4691 South Victor Pike. It is one parcel that contains 44.07 acres in Perry Township, and it is currently zoned Estate Residential 1. And the request here is for a rezone from its current zoning RE1 to medium-density residential. And the purpose of the rezone request is so that petitioners can develop the lot to create attainable middle-class housing in Monroe County. Petitioners under this rezone proposal are proposing a mix of housing types that includes single-family impaired patio homes. They anticipate creating roughly 125 lots. Under the mixed residential density, the zone allows for MR Zone allows a density of 4.8 lots per acre. And as part of their proposal, they have two ingress egress points along South Victor Pike, as well as a connection from the proposed development to both the Clear Creek Trail and the Bloomington Rail Trail. Here we have a map that shows existing site conditions of the parcel. As you can see, not all of the 44 acreage is buildable. The estimated usable acreage is about 27 acres. And that accounts for a reduction in the planned roadways and a utility line or corridor that runs through a property, as well as some slope issues and floodplain issues on the east side. So this petition has been in existence for a while now. It went to the Drainage Board back in March, where the Drainage Board did vote to approve this proposed project. They felt that it complied with all of the new critical drainage area release rates and felt that it otherwise met the standards of the Drainage Stormwater Ordinance. So it has gone to Drainage Board, where it got their approval. Petitioners have also been working with the Highway Department all these months. And the Highway Department also supports the proposed improvements that are planned for Victor Pike. And they feel that the project is also, or will also be up to highway standards. This even with other developments in the vicinity. So Highway feels confident that what is proposed is satisfactory. The project also has received will serve and capacity letters. Natural gas will be provided by Vectren Sewer, by CBU. The water supplier is Southern Monroe Water Association, or possibly CBU. And then Duke is on board for electric. There has been conversations between the petitioner and the Monroe Fire Protection District. So they have been apprised of this proposal throughout the duration of its slight iterations along the way. So that, so it has been in front of the fire district, and they are aware of what's being proposed and are satisfied with it. So I mentioned that this petition has been around for a while. It has gone through several committee meetings, including Plan Review Committee. And so I just wanted to share the timeline with you here, just to sort of illustrate how often it has been heard. And so you will note that it was at the August 17th Plan Commission meeting most recently. And at that meeting, the Board voted by an eight to zero vote to recommend a new, or make a neutral recommendation to county commissioners. And staff, after reviewing the proposal and looking at it through the lens of the comp plan and other considerations, staff gives a positive recommendation based on the findings of fact, and of course, subject to county highway and drainage engineer reports. So that, with that, I will take any questions.
Let's see if my colleagues have questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the lack of fire hydrants. Is there any way to compensate for that, or can they be supplied differently?
Yeah, I think the petitioners will be working to get, to get those, to get hydrants throughout the development. So they were able to meet that hydrant request.
So if, if the petitioner does it themselves, is that something that Southern Monroe Water can support?
I think so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens? Yeah, I, I have several concerns. First of all, you know, there's some cars in that area, is my understanding. And I am not sure that this really protects the environmentally sensitive areas. How did the planning department come down, saying that it does protect those?
Well, the petitioners did have a, an outside company do a investigation of the site. And so, you know, of course, we were able to view that report that was provided by a certified specialist. And they indicated in the report that the cars would not be impacted by what is being proposed. And so, you know, we felt confident that that was an accurate report provided to us.
And has the stormwater inspector weighed in on any of this?
Weighting on it?
Weighed in on this, sorry.
Yeah. Yes, our MS4 coordinator has been involved with this project pretty extensively from its inception. And she has been able to review all of the materials provided. And again, took, took it to the Drainage Board, where they were able to lend support. And they frankly felt like it actually went above and beyond in terms of stormwater maintenance and standards. It's me, it's meeting the, the pretty strict standards.
So there's nothing that really locks a developer into providing homes at the the price point that is listed in, in this application, right? Once, once it's zoned this way, they can go after much, much higher price points. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance, county zoning ordinance doesn't really have any influence. I mean, it would largely be, you know, short, short of what the ordinance would provide or, or require in terms of lot size and density. I mean, it would, you know, other than their word, it would, you know, be up to market demand, I think.
So also, how does this speak to maintaining the character of the surrounding neighborhood?
Planning Department felt that, you know, this is considered a transition zone. And so what is being proposed, we felt really did kind of meet that, what we would consider definition of a transition. There are other developments in the vicinity that are as denser, denser than this one. So we, we actually felt like it, it was meeting the character of the surrounding areas. I mean, it's, you know, it's definitely, this is considered a transition area. So, you know, it would be going from the RE1 zone to something else more dense. But again, we felt like that was a, an appropriate zone based on the comp plan.
And is, my memory, you know, I've slept since we've heard about this a couple of different times. But is there a high, is there a high-power electrical line that goes across some of this?
There is. There's a overhead line that runs bisects the corridor right here in the middle. It's about 10 acres of the total parcel. And the petitioners have spoken. You know, the, the power company, and they have, the power company is aware of what's being proposed.
And is that part of the area that will not be built on?
Correct.
Sorry, I'm blanked on the, oh, I understand that there were, might have been other letters in opposition to this that have come in since the last time. Can we see some of those?
Um, I don't, um, no, I, I mean, not to my knowledge. I think we inadvertently omitted one letter in opposition in this packet to commissioners. But to my knowledge, we've been able to incorporate everything that's come across our desks other than this one particular letter. And that we will provide to you in the next packet for the formal session. Yeah, I don't have any of the letters of support or remoncy since ready to present here. So if you would like a copy of that, we can send it afterwards.
Well, in the packet that we have to review for next week, yes, I would appreciate seeing those. Thank you.
Okay, and the, and the petitioners, I think, will be adding to that packet as well. So it'll be slightly different than what you, what you got today.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Sure.
Um, so can you, well, the problem I'm having with this, with this petition is because the density is so high, it is, it is going to add a great deal to the traffic on Victor Pike, right? So there, there's a point of ingress and egress. Can you point those out with the cursor?
Sure. So this is the north. Let me, let me know if you can.
Yeah.
I have trouble seeing that. And this is the south.
Okay.
And then the points to the trails are somewhere in the vicinity down here. This is Clear Creek Trail, and then this is Bloomington Rail Trail. So it'd be over here.
Yeah. So, um, you know, I know our Highway Department has looked at this. But when I hear from residents in this part of the community, they complain about traffic. And there are a couple of other developments coming in here, including a pretty big development in the city just north of here as well. I am really concerned about traffic, because these are not roads that we can expand, widen, et cetera. We just don't have the space to do this. So I'm, I'm really concerned, because once this happens, that's 12 trips a day per house, per living unit. That is pretty excessive in terms of what it does to the traffic in this area, especially that road and Rogers, and of course, Victor Pike. So not really a question, just a comment, that this is really a big concern. And, you know, while I've heard from, we've heard from Highway Department and Fall Saturday that, no, everything's fine, it's going to be good. And I think that's the belief. But when you drive down this area at certain times of day, it's pretty congested. And to add this many homes, I think, is going to be detrimental to the quality of life for the people who live in this area. At the same time, I would like to see the stormwater improvements that will come with this. It's, it's a good piece of property. I don't see medium residential, medium-density residential as a transition. Personally, I see that sort of as a top end. So I don't, I don't know that it fits. So with that being said, I know we are going to put this on our regular agenda. Do my colleagues have a preference whether we hear this next week or the week after?
Yeah. Just because of my other commitments for the next few days, I would prefer the following week, because this is a very big packet to get through.
Huge.
Yeah. And, yeah, especially when I didn't get the current one until late yesterday afternoon to try to get through everything. So I want to go into it a lot more in depth.
Okay. So Ms. Payne, is September 29th a viable date to hear this? We're within our timeframe for hearing this?
Yes, I think that works.
Okay, and that works for you personally, and requires?
Yeah.
Okay. It's always good to ask. Vacation and after the else have to pick up the pieces. So no, I just want to ask, make sure that this worked for you. And in the meantime, any questions we have can be forwarded to you for, to make sure that, that it gets addressed on the, on the 29th. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Do my colleagues have anything else? Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much for this. I would, I would ask that we get a, a full presentation on the 29th, because there'll be people joining from the public who might not know much about this proposal. Even though we've all heard it multiple times, they might not have. So.
Sure, of course.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We have one more item on our agenda, although other department heads are welcome to chime in. So we have Ms. Brown from the Clerk's Office.
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, there I am. Whoa, okay. You can hear me all right, right? So, excuse me, but Clerk Nicole Brown wanted me to mention another area that you may or may not know about in regards to Election Central. And this actually is probably one of my most favorite things to do with election. So I teach classes that help people register potential voters. And usually I work with a league of women voters, but the classes aren't limited just them. Just recently, I had taught a class for a number of people from IB Tech. And next Tuesday, September 21st, I have a class here scheduled at Election Central. It can kind of seem a little early to register people in regards that our election isn't until May 3rd. But as you know, time goes by pretty quickly. And these classes are actually held year-round as the need arises, no matter when the election is. And the reason that I love doing this so much is that it really helps everyone who takes the class to have the confidence to go out and register people. But it also brings so much more information to those people that are taking the class. And hopefully, they're transposing that into other people. When they come in contact with these people that they're registering, and the more information, actually more correct information that gets out to the public, it's going to be so much better for our election process as a whole. And so it just, is just really exciting to me. And my classes run, I can have like up to 28 people in the class. And it's just really fun. It must, must tell you that I'm somewhat of an election nerd or something. Because when people, you can just see the light bulb goes on, and they go, oh, I didn't know that about the election, or how things are processed, or however it works. It, it just, it's just really fun, and it really makes for a fun class. And also, I wanted to mention that on, coming up is the National Voter Registration Day. And I don't know if you knew that, but it's September 28th. And so, anyway, thank you for your time. And I just wanted you to know a little bit more, another purpose that Election Central is used for.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Do my colleagues have comments or questions?
Are these classes only done at Election Central, or can they be done at other places around the community?
A couple of years ago, I actually went to IU and did them in classrooms as professors had requested. That has pretty much stopped, and I don't think that'll happen anymore. But I, it felt, it feels better to have them here, but of course, I will go where I need to go. It just works better. But I haven't done any IU classes probably for two years. And it was classes of informing them and getting them registered at the same time. I thought it was a great idea, but I don't think it was really effective, and I'm not for sure why. But this is probably more targeted to people going out more so, maybe the class. The professor just wanted me to come in and, and explain more about election and the process, and get them registered. So they weren't signing up for the class. They got kind of put into the class. And perhaps that's why it didn't work as well, maybe. But I see a lot of really good results having it here.
Great, thank you for being here.
You are welcome.
Thanks. Let's see if there's any other departments. Ms. Bierman? Good morning.
Morning. Hi, I sent you an email this morning. And I, you probably hadn't have a chance to see it, but I have an interesting conundrum right now. Ordinance number 2017-25, which is our floodplain ordinance. The state, when they reviewed it to make sure it was in compliance, they found 24 Scrivener errors. And normally, if there's Scrivener error, we don't need to bring it back to the commissioners to sign off on those. They just get fixed. In fact, in fact, that's what we did. And we have been administering our ordinance since, since then. But it was recently identified, because we're working with a property owner to kind of fix a flooding issue on their property, that the state of Indiana and the federal government does not have officially an approved signed ordinance that corrected those Scrivener's errors. I'm happy to share my screen here, so you can see the ordinance, and I can familiarize you with what I'm discussing. All right, can you see that 2017-25? So basically, what this ordinance does, what it, it completely purged the entirety of our old definitions for floodplain in Chapter 801. It got rid of Chapter 808. And that's what all of this crossed out information is. And then it introduces the new ordinance that the state requires us to adopt and administer, so that we can remain in the floodplain program for the federal government. And so if, within this, highlighted in yellow are, here's one of them. And I'll get to a couple of others here. These were the Scrivener errors that were corrected. And we did send this back in 2019 to the state. But because it was not a signed document, they were unable to completely accept this document. So going all the way to the back last page here, Dave Schilling recommended that I bring this to you today just to point out that Julie, you're the only commissioner here that, at the time, was signing this document. And he thought that it might be a, that you might be able to sign this on behalf of all the current commissioners today. And we were hoping to kind of come up with a solution, or if you needed this to come back as an actual new ordinance, 2021 ordinance, that we could, you know, present more formally and get it on an agenda. Like I said, normally Scrivener errors don't come before you if we find them. But this one's different. We need the state and the federal government to have this signed document on file, so that they can administer and help us problem solve some flooding issues in our county.
Right. Um, and, and essentially, I've opened the email since you started here. And essentially, what, what this is, is just adding reference points. It doesn't change the meaning of this document by any stretch of the imagination. So I don't know, my colleagues have questions for Ms. Bierman? You want? So how would you prefer we proceed, my colleagues? Can I just, can you just have me sign this? Or would you like to see this on a formal agenda? It seems like it's something that we should do sooner rather than later, because it does relate to flooding and floodplains.
Because it doesn't really change anything, I'm perfectly happy for you to sign it.
Okay. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, too, as long as that we get approval from people like Dave Schilling.
Yeah, he's, he's the one who suggested this.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay. So would one of you make a motion to that regard?
I move that we have Commission President Julie Thomas sign document 2017-25 on floodplain ordinance from Monroe County.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. So this is just to address Scrivener errors. Mr. Schilling, did you have anything you needed to add?
No, I just joined in, in case you had any questions.
Always good to see you.
Thank you.
Um, is there any public comment on this item? Participants thing here. Right. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Copper, will you please call the role on approving me to sign to correct Scrivener's errors in ordinance 2017-25?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens? Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you. So that's taken care of?
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Anyone else have items for our work session? All right, seeing none, our next regular meeting and work session meeting will be September 22nd at 10 a.m. right here on your favorite Zoom channel. And with that, unless my colleagues have something else, all right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.